All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. I'm gonna briefly turn it over to Chief Galta with some safety information since we're under some significant watches.
Yeah, so as you all know, there's a kind of storm that's a little bit west of us. There's a tornado watch. This is probably the strongest building in the area, so you're very safe here, but if their sirens go off on the top of the building here, we'll just move to the center of the building away from the lights. But I don't think there's any reason for anybody to be out here to probably save your career.
Thank you so much. All right, we do have a need for remote electronic attendance. Ms. Finch?
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Alder Person James Patrick Schmidt at the committee of the whole and city council meeting, May 21st, 2024, due to a personal illness.
Second.
All right, that's a motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
All right, our first item of business is the oath of office for promotional appointment to the rank of Sergeant to Cesar Lopez effective May 19th, 2024.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I've said this before, this is such a fun times for me to be able to stand up here and get a chance to introduce you to officers and certainly promote officers is another honor that I get to have. You know, over the last four or five years, it's been tough times in the police department. We've since 45 officers depart for various different reasons and 225 years of experience left as command staff. And our command staff starts at a sergeant, lieutenant, deputy chief, and of course, the chief. So we've lost a lot of experience. We rebuilt that experience, made 14 promotions, 14 out of our 20 command staff that I've promoted since I've been the police chief here. And so it's certainly my honor to add another individual to the command staff by promoting Cesar Lopez from his current role as a juvenile detective to a sergeant. So Sergeant Cesar Lopez is a seasoned law enforcement officer serving at the Moline Police Department since 2017. Throughout his distinguished career, Sergeant Lopez has served in various capacities, including a patrol officer, field training officer, liaison to the Moline High School, as a school resource officer, and his current role as a detective in the criminal investigation division juvenile unit. Cesar is also bilingual, one of our three bilingual supervisors, who I believe all three of them are here today, serving our Spanish-speaking population, and he does that with just a wonderful smile on his face every time. He's also very involved in our homeless initiative team. He's been a part of that for several years. The crisis intervention team, a TASER instructor. He's a vital member of the department's crisis negotiation team, crisis intervention team, juvenile investigations division. So today, we see several family members here. Wonderful to see the young families, too. I really enjoy seeing them and their parents and everybody here. So his wife, Selena Lopez, great little cute family here. His son, Armani, here somewhere, right there, cool guy, and his daughter Mia Lopez. Yeah, he's also here with his parents, Miguel and Victoria, sister Sonia, mother-in-law Yolanda, and sister-in-law Maria. So married, you mean, and administered the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Cesar Lopez.
I, Cesar Lopez.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
And Moline Code of Ordinances.
And Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applicable to police administration.
Applicable to police administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
Of the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my belief.
According to the best of my belief.
Relation once again.
As I may have mentioned in the past, the city of Moline always has a supervisor working 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The first line supervisor is a sergeant, so we always have at least a sergeant or lieutenant working 24 hours a day. It's so important to have skilled professionals that are here to supervise our staff, train our staff, help them through these things. And of course, you know, even though I'm the police chief, these guys are the front lines doing the work. The news articles that you see in the paper, protecting our community, they're the ones that are on the front lines doing this every day while you and I are sleeping or doing our other functions. So I'm so proud of them. And so I'm gonna pin his chevrons on, which is the insignia for the rank of Sergeant. And if I could, I would like to invite his wife, Selena Ford, and she can pin on. Family, if you wanna come forward and just take a couple photos, certainly, or go back to the department and take some pictures if you'd like, but if you wanna grab one here in council chambers. I never want to. The door doesn't mind.
Okay, our next item of business are board appointments. The mayor's reappointment of Jeff Adams into the Historic Preservation Commission for a full three-year term to expire April 30th, 2027. Any questions? Hearing none. Chief, when you're ready, could you tell us if there's public comment?
Yeah, I did not see any, but let me double check. If anybody signed it, if anybody signed it, is there any public comment?
I know we have one to read from online.
Uh, there's none.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
There's one public comment received via email from Kim Ellis. Hello, I am a resident in Moline. I'm concerned about Roundup being sprayed in our parks this spring and summer. Is there a safer alternative that can be used in place of Roundup? Below is what I found on the internet that is safer. Mix one gallon of white vinegar with one cup of salt and mix in a tablespoon of liquid dish soap. Also, can residents help in putting mulch down around the trees to keep the weeds down so Roundup doesn't need to be used?
Thank you. I don't believe we have any questions on the agenda, so we move to our committee of the whole agenda items. Agenda item 8.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities, Inc., for project number 1471, Moline Public Library Garden, for the amount of $1,287,000. Chief, I mean, Bob?
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're joined tonight, of course, our library director, Brian Leir, is here, and we are recommending approval of this contract to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities, in the amount specified in the agenda of $1,287,000, and with a reminder that the groundbreaking ceremonies will be May 24th, 28th, at 4:00 PM, if you can join us.
Motion to approve. Second. Thank you. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Item 8.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by adding 9th Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of 110 feet. Mr. Vitas or Mr. Dryer?
Good evening. This was a request that was made by a new property owner who had redeveloped some of the property there on the east side. It was reviewed by the Traffic Engineering Committee, and he's having difficulty getting equipment in and out of the garage there with vehicles parked on that side of the street. So the recommendation of the committee was to extend the no parking restriction.
Thank you so much. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Item 8.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by adding 13th Street on the east side at the 11th Avenue intersection for a distance of 78.5 feet. Mr. Dryer?
This was another item brought up to us by a resident in the neighborhood. It's a T-intersection in an older section of the city where the streets are pretty narrow. 13th Street is about 19 feet wide, so with people parking very close to the intersection and across the top of the T, access issues were being found to be problematic. So we reviewed that, too, with the Traffic Engineering Committee and recommended installing some parking restrictions at the intersection.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. 8.4, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 5 thereof, all-way stop intersections by adding 8th Avenue and 36th Street. Mr. Dryer?
This was intersections, a T-intersection of a newly reconstructed street. Since the time of the reconstruction, we had a couple of complaints about site distance at the corners, requests from residents for installing mirrors so that they could see around the corners. It was reviewed by the Traffic Engineering Committee, and given the geometry, we recommend an all-way stop.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Motion by Finch?
Second.
Second by Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item 8.5, an ordinance amending Chapter 25 Planning and Development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 25-2100, Official Comprehensive Plan Adopted, Territorial Application. Enacting thereto an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Appendix Q, entitled Avenue of the City's Corridor Plan, Future Youth Map, Incorporated therein as a portion of Zone 4, Page 11, southwest corner of Avenue of the Cities and 44th Street. Mr. Dryer?
Mr. Mathias.
Sorry, Mr. Mathias, yes.
Yes, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So these two items, 8.5 and 8.6, they are tied together. The rezoning has been requested by a prospective property owner here for this property on Avenue of the Cities. It's actually 2307 44th Street is the address that will, that would be rezoned. But that, that prospective buyer discovered that the most, southernmost parcel for them was actually zoned R2 or a single-family residential. So when they inquired with our staff and found that out, they're requesting a rezoning back to the original, this was previously zoned commercial back in 2006. So it did change with the last zoning code. I think there was probably some wishful thinking that, you know, maybe it would go to residential at the time, but it's continued to be used as commercial all along. And then the final note I would have on this, the comp plan shows it as residential, right? That was the reason that the, it was, you know, zoned at residential back in, in 2006. So to approve this rezoning, we do, staff does recommend also amend the comp plan, and that's why you see those two items on the agenda there. So this went to our plan commission. Their, their recommendation was to approve nine, vote of nine to zero, and that's also the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, moving to 8.6, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 Zoning and Land Development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as Section 35-3103, Map of Standard Zoning Districts, parentheses, 2307 44th Street. Mr. Mathias, anything else to add?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by Finch? Second. Second, to my right, here with Razak. Discussion? Mr. Timian?
I just wanted to extend appreciation. Amending the comprehensive plan is a very normal thing when situations like this come up, and we didn't have staff for such a long time that it felt like a out-of-place action. So I'm glad to see that we're back in the place where we can, we can do this kind of regular city function for situations like this.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item 8.7, a resolution amending the annual meeting schedule for 2024 to reflect the new meeting time of the Cape Moline Beautiful Commission to be held at 4:00 PM on the second Thursday of each month, effective June 2024, and authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the amended 2024 annual meeting schedule. Mr. Vitas?
Sure, this is a very straightforward request, moving their meeting until 4:00 PM rather than 4:30. And it is required that, since the calendar is adopted annually by council for all boards and commissions and the council, that any amendment would be brought forward.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion?
I will just say, just to make a note, that that 4:30 time was really helpful in the previous council because the, the representation needed from the council, we were able to spread it out because someone who worked regularly until 4:00 PM was able to get there by 4:30. So just something to keep in mind for staff when it comes to scheduling things is that when you need representation, it's helpful when people can actually be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted.
Uh huh. Okay, roll call, please, if there's no further discussion. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, item number 8.8, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a licensing agreement with Trixie Rocks Designs LLC to install, use, and maintain pan faces and existing wall sign for advertising/identification purposes only above the entrance of 3156 Avenue of the Cities, Moline, Illinois that will overhang public right-of-way. Is that Mr. Mathias?
Chris?
Yes, this is a simple sign face change, which normally would not require any kind of permit in our code. They're just changing out the face. We have a new business going in. But shout out to Irene Munoz, Irene Munoz and my staff who discovered that we did not have a licensing agreement for this sign. And if it's overhanging right of way, which this is, it's overhanging the sidewalk, we have to have a licensing agreement so we can have the insurance in place in case there was some kind of accident or something. So this is really just taking care of something that, you know, a licensing agreement that I think wasn't, since 1996, we didn't have on file. So we just asked, staff just asking for you to approve this. Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? I think we all say thank you for catching that. Please pass that on. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, item 8.9, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a First Amendment to land lease agreement with GTP Acquisition Partners, the sec, uh, Two, LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company for city-owned property located at 4213 16th Avenue, Moline. Is that Mr. Mathias?
That would be, that would be Mr. Lodi.
Oh, Mr. Lodi, thank you.
GTP Partners owns or operates a Monopole upon the 42nd Street Water Tank Site. They're requesting, and staff is recommending, approval of an amendment to the land lease agreement there that extends the lease 15 years. The provisions that the city would gain is 4% escalation in rent revenue as well as 15,000 cash upfront.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Motion by Finch?
Second.
Seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Item 8.10, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a parking lease agreement with Monarch Investment and Management Group to lease 36 parking spaces at the rate of $35 per space located in Lot R to provide parking for the Leclerc Apartments located at 421 19th Street, Moline, Illinois, and approving the waiver of the parking lease fees from April 20th through March 2023. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, I'm happy to report that we're finally at the, at the stage where this is the last of many, many parking lot leases that have been outstanding for many, many years. This culminates with the approval of this parking lease would culminate bringing all of them up to date and in force, which is a GAAP requirement, which is actually a GASB requirement that went into effect last year. So by not doing this and not keeping them up to date, then it has to be reported in your audit that we're failing to maintain our leases properly. So we extended this lease. This is the identical lease that was prepared and provided to Bush Construction as a part of the JCPenney redevelopment, RDA. So this is identical to that. This parking lot is actually located just to the east of the renewed property, the parking lot that they own along, in between 4th Avenue A and 4th, 4th Avenue. And we're recommending approval at this rate. I can tell you, though, that that Monarch, of course, was surprised by the amount. Their lease goes back to almost 2006 or 2008. Has not been negotiated since. Their rate was $8 per space. It was never updated, and going back to 2010 was the last time this was touched. So, you know, I've advised them that we're bringing this forward for approval this evening, and I don't see any other choice if we're going to bring these leases in line and treat all of the respective businesses fairly throughout the downtown.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, second by Macias. Discussion? Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief Vitas?
Chief, thank you, thank you.
I apologize.
Chief, I get one of those.
What was the methodology for determining the price?
I'm sorry?
The methodology for determining the adequate price to charge for the parking lot spaces?
How did we do that?
Correct.
We did that basically, we started actually going back to our leases. If you remember back in 2021, when it first came out of the council, we were in the midst of negotiating with the US government, GSA.
Right.
Specifically for the post office, who was, by the way, the only organization that paid their lease throughout the entire pandemic. Only once. They never stopped paying. So that became kind of the baseline as to what we were going to do per space. Then we had the agreement with the Access Hotel. We had the agreement with the law firm on 5th Avenue, I think it's Bozeman. We had an agreement with, of course, Monarch, now with JCPenney, and we also had an agreement with the, with the Element Hotel as well. So that, those numbers are the numbers that we use to gel our $35 rate, which is pretty much a standard rate. If you go to Davenport, you know, that's pretty much what they would charge. You know, covered indoor space, $100 space in Davenport.
Do we feel that it covers capital replacement over the lifetime?
Well, considering how many years went by on this particular lot, probably not.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, they haven't presented a problem to us in the past. I don't envision we're gonna have a problem with them going forward. I did advise them, though, that, you know, I want this to go into effect basically on the 1st of July. You know, if they, if they haven't signed it or executed, I will be back, and I will look at restrictions on the parking space, basically eliminating it.
Thank you.
Closing it.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Item 8.11, a resolution approving the purchase of one parcel of excess I-74 Bridge property from the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, for the total fair market value of $196,000, and directing city administration to pursue the purchase of said parcels with IDOT through its completion, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, corporation council, and city staff to do all things necessary to acquire said real property. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, madam, and mayor, members of council, this represents the final parcel that I'm aware of at, as of today, that IDOT is relinquishing as a remnant parcel along in the corridor. This is the property that was first offered to the Deere, Deere &amp; Company, and they have chosen not to acquire this property. It's the property directly across from the off-ramp leaving Iowa and entering Illinois at River Drive, as well as two smaller remnant parcels that would join existing property that we own along 6th Avenue. We're recommending approval of this purchase and advancing it back to IDOT tomorrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We move to our informationals. 9.1, lead service line replacement. Mr. Lodi?
Good evening again, Your Honor, council. During the April roundtable discussion, we discussed staff's recommendations and planning relating to lead service line replacements which are required as part of the Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act and potential future federal regulations that are coming forward. During those discussions, we described the service line that is, is broken into two pieces. One piece that typically lies out in the street that the city owns and maintains, and then the other piece that typically lies on the private property that the property owner maintains. Though, during those discussions, staff recommended that for, for efficiency and effectiveness of executing our plan, that we transfer the responsibility of the replacement of the private side over to the city for the purposes of compliance with the, the regulation. The, to the city for the purposes of compliance with the, the regulation. The, this informational is the introduction of proposed language in the code in sections thirty-four dash twenty-one oh-two and thirty-four dash twenty-one fourteen to affect that, that transfer from the, the property owner over to the city. The staff is recommending this because it's going to make it much easier for us to coordinate the installation of the entire line, which is required by the regulation. Another requirement of that Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act is the actual letters that some of you received this week, and I want to assure you that we've had many calls come in. I know that a lot of you has, have received those calls as well. Know that ninety-nine percent of the language in the letter is required by the EPA.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loade. Questions from the council? Thank you for having all of the information for us and previous, you know, discussions about. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah. Tony, I'm, I'm reading this correctly, that we're also recommending take, that the city is taking the cost of that full replacement, right?
The, yes, the, the responsibility for the financial, the financial and the responsibility for the replacement, yes.
And I just, I don't, not remembering from April, did we have an estimate of what that cost was, or what we think it might be? I understand it might be in a range, or there's a lot of flex to that.
What we, what we talked to you about in April was a proposed cost per service line for, for the full service line of ten thousand dollars per service. That's a cost that we have seen up in the Chicagoland area. We expect that cost to be slightly lower here in the, in the western Illinois area.
And just to refresh our memories, there were also routes for paying for that, for us getting that money that you, that we have discussed previously.
Yep, and there, the staff intends to bring the, a, a surcharge proposal to you as part of the September enterprise fund financial discussions.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder on the number.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Thanks for the reminder on the numbers, just trying to keep them straight in my head. I do think that it's something that as we, we know, a lot of homes and a lot of families in the city are going to be dealing with. I prefer to approach it as we are from that group opportunity where we're going to, you know, take on that, that cost, which is then, you know, sharing the burden across everyone in essentially, as opposed to sharing it across only those homes that are affected, or, I think it's a community problem, and we're addressing it in a community way, and I do appreciate that. So, but also just being mindful that it's, it's one of those big projects that we have to make sure we're, we're taking care of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
I know that this project is lead service line. If we run into a house that has lead internal lines while doing this replacement, because obviously they're going to be in the house to hook it up, is there a course of action to take there? Because I'm sure that some of our older homes, we can't pay for it, but, I mean, is this an opportunity to, to document it?
All of the fin, all of the regulations relating to this, water, the water system regulations are silent with regard to the plumbing inside the house.
Okay.
Can you please refresh my memory, though, also about grant or other opportunities there are for us to finance this?
Yes, so we believe that we're going to receive some congressional funds through Congressman Eric Shorenson in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to replace lead service lines in the fifteenth street corridor yet this year. In addition to that, the staff has submitted a project plan to Illinois EPA for the replacement in two census tracks. We've, we've strategically selected census tracks that score the best in the EPA's scoring matrix. Optimistically, we're hoping that within the next month, we'll get news that will get principal forgiveness for a portion of those.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we all were reminded that it, it's a variety of ways we're paying for this, not just a surcharge.
Yes, so one more point of consideration for you. Obviously, we're not asking for any action tonight, but something for, for you to think about, and that is that there have been a number of service lines on the private side that have been replaced since this Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act went into place in, in April, or I'm sorry, January of twenty twenty-two. And so at some point, staff is going to be coming forward with a recommendation to reimburse, for some sort of reimbursement for those property owners that had to incur those costs themselves.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Loade. Chief, discussion regarding fireworks in section eleven dash eleven oh four of the Code of Ordinances.
Well, the good news is we found a better looking replacement for the fire chief and fire marshal. Mitch Cunningham will join me for this presentation. So, Happy Memorial Day, it's coming around the corner, and of course, that means the next holiday is the Fourth of July. Those of you that have served for a little while know that that is a popular yet unpopular holiday. So I wanted to have a brief discussion with you about the fireworks complaints that you undoubtedly receive, and just have a little bit of a preparatory discussion on what can and most likely can't be done to address this. I think we need to acknowledge that this isn't a Moline issue, that this is in every community, fireworks on the Fourth of July and roughly about a week, a time period. And there's two categories of people. People that love fireworks, people that hate fireworks. You're going to hear from the people that hate fireworks, undoubtedly, and we understand that. The fireworks, I guess we'll call it epidemic, really kind of exploded, and I know Mitch probably can comment on it, in two, two reasons, particularly around here. One is the pandemic, when, if you remember in twenty twenty, that happened in the spring, obviously, and they canceled all the city-sponsored fireworks, and everyone did their own. Along the same time, somewhere along the lines, Iowa legalized fireworks, which made it closer than driving to Wisconsin or Missouri to obtain fireworks. And I think Mitch can comment about, you know, the, the laws both in Illinois and Iowa that really make fireworks supply extremely easy and prevalent in our community. The number of fireworks complaints at the Moline Police Department got in the week of July one to July seventh, which is, you know, the holiday as it moves, either hits a weekend, or this, this year it's in the middle of the week, so we're going to have kind of two weekends. It's not apples-to-apples comparison, but in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, they, the complaints went up thirty-three percent. We have returned back to pre-pandemic calls for service about that. We're, we're exactly at the same numbers, so it has kind of leveled back off to what I would call the bad normal, if you will. The other problem is if you look at a pin map of the locations, it's citywide, but as expected, obviously, highly concentrated in our residential neighborhoods. We, I'm just going to be honest with you, we cannot throw enough manpower, the police department or even the fire department, to address this issue. It just, we just can't do it. There's just not enough people, because we still have very active bars, we still have active alcohol consumption in the, the holiday season, and the calls for service, and we're getting, every time, this is a very popular holidays, you know, and so it draws our resources to priority calls. And while I understand that the fireworks complaints are very serious to people that are being affected by them, they are in kind of a nuisance category as opposed to if there's a fire or a fight, shooting or something like that, that, that takes precedence. Second is, it would be untenable for the cost to throw unwieldy amounts of overtime and, and stuff added. I just think it would be futile to address these with just continued manpower. So, you know, I wanted to have some conversation about this, and I'll give Mitch a minute to comment about some research he's done about options, but one of them is to consider raising the fines deterrence. As you all are drivers, some cyclists more than others, but the speed limit, we don't catch every speeder, but it is a deterrent, and we can talk about changing the fines, but I also want to have an honest conversation about the impact of fines. And if some of you may or be keenly aware of, is that fines sometimes are not very popular. And in all reality, fines disproportionately impact certain neighborhoods, certain people of wealth, certain communities of color, and I can tell you that there is a large section of fireworks complaints in some of our lower income or communities of color that I think looking at it probably would potentially disproportionately be affected. So there are a lot of things to consider here, and that's why we're here to just have a discussion with you, and I'll let Mitch talk a little bit about some of the research.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple weeks ago here in Moline, Moline Fire Department hosted Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office and the IDNR, and we had a pyrotechnics workshop, if you will. Had over twenty departments in attendance. We were able to network with those individuals, find out what are the strategies other communities throughout the state are using, and what we heard was pretty discouraging. There's real no enforcement mechanism in the state of Illinois. Stands are, or businesses are allowed to sell them to consumers. It's not regulated. They're supposed to have the proper permitting, proper paperwork, but they just don't. So our strategy this year, and State Fire Marshal's Office said we were, we were on track, is to increase our social media awareness. We discuss, you know, confiscation or raising the fines. And I know Chief Call has his, his opinions on confiscations, and we agree with those as well, how that could be problematic. So our, our standpoint would be, you know, stricter fines would probably be the best solution, increase social media awareness, and, but that does take some time. It wouldn't be something that would, we would see immediate effects from. It would take some definite time. In twenty twenty-three, the Moline Fire Department had seven related firework calls in five days. One of those was a garage fire from pyrotechnics. Unfortunately, they are, they are legal to sell in the state of Illinois. You can go to a community southwest of here, in walking distance from city hall here, across the river, and purchase fireworks. So it's a very, very problematic issue that we're kind of looking for answers for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, since the Fire Marshal brought up confiscation, certainly that's a, a technique that's available to us. My concern is turning a mountain into a, or a mole, mountain, making a mountain out of a molehill. My fear in these situations is people have a lot of money invested in these, and we end up having a use-of-force scandal over fireworks. That my officers are using force to effect an arrest, a lawful arrest, and it goes awry over fireworks. And I, my, my personal opinion of it is, I don't know that that's the best use of our resources and the best use of our use of force, which is very low. It's less than one-half of one percent on all of our calls, or sixty-three thousand calls. It just concerns me. Not saying we can't do it, we won't do it in the right situation. When you're going to a drunk party in the middle of the evening, around a holiday celebration, and we get into this con, this argument with someone, and we're saying, we're taking this stuff, we're entering your property and taking this stuff, and we're taking you, and now we've got family members that are upset, that's a great way to end up on the national news. So that gives me pause. But, again, all these options are certainly on the table. So we're looking for some advice or how you want to handle this, or if you're okay with the way we've been doing things. We can do all those things. I do want to draw your attention to section eleven dash eleven zero four, which the fine for fireworks is fifty dollars. If you pay it within seven days, it's twenty-five. So if we were going to raise the fine, what would that be? If you wanted to be a deterrent, the maximum you could raise it to would be seven hundred and fifty dollars by state, or by state statute, that's the maximum ordinance fine, fine can be. That sends a message. And so, look, look forward to hearing any input that you have, or, I will say that if you do want change in ordinance, we are up against a little bit of a calendar clock, that we would probably need to bring that forward to the next meeting so that it could get through and be on the books by July fourth.
Thoughts from the council, please. Yes, Mr. Castro.
So last year, do you know about how many, how many residents you fined for fireworks? Me, just because you didn't?
We try to gain cooperation. Our, and I know Fire Marshal also, you know, the, the cooperation to get me, some communities say, listen, we're going to tolerate it for these three, four days. Done it ten, done it midnight, please, you know? And they gain cooperation through, through that way. And that's what my officers are going, and like, stop, don't do it. The other problem is chasing, this stuff's in the air. So you, you, I'm sure you get it even as alderman. You're going to get, someone's lighting up fireworks in my neighborhood, and we get a call from an address, and they really don't know where it's coming from. So now, and, and you can imagine, getting somewhere up as fifty calls, you know, thirty to fifty calls, the officers that are signing fireworks details, basically those are calls are stacked. So now they're driving from here to here to here. They get there, it's not going off. I mean, fireworks displays last, what, a whole one, ten minutes max? I mean, my officers can't even get there in ten minutes. So now it's gone, or, you know, they don't know where it's coming from, they're driving around the neighborhood. It's typical investigation. So there's a lot of issues with that. So, to answer your question directly, is our number one tactic is try to gain compliance.
So really raising the fine would, wouldn't really do much then, or?
You know, I mean, I think one of the concerns that I know the Parks Department has is, is some issues in the parks. And I think that some of these issues that we, we'd have on streets, parks, public right-of-way, we would take a zero tolerance approach and say, you're getting a ticket. But we would need to do a public education. It would hopefully be a deterrent. People say, look, I don't know if I want to light up two hundred dollars worth of fireworks for seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. It's the same thing as a speeding ticket. It's a hundred and sixty-six dollars for speeding. Let's drive the speed limit. Right? We can't catch every speed. But, again, if you look at the map, a lot of them are in areas that I think you're going to hear complaints about that. I can tell you, I got a complaint yesterday, a very angry individual, former colleague that, and that you might all know, and he was involved, his family was involved in a traffic crash, and absolutely was upset that the at-fault driver, which was a family member, got a, a ticket in a traffic crash. I mean, citations are not popular, and you're going to get just as many complaints of those as you are these. So, I mean, it's a lot to weigh.
Mr. Murphy.
I think the issue for the people who have complained to me, or since I've been in the city of Moline, has been the, the loud ones. The ones that scare the vets, that scare the dogs and the cats, you know, that cause anxiety. Is there some way, you know, the sparklers aren't the problem, the ones that, you know, they light and go up in the sky. It's, it's just, I can't think of what they're called, but.
Yeah.
The very loud ones that are, that's the ones that they.
So there's a couple of different types of fireworks. Novelty are permitted in the city of Moline currently, and that's your sparklers, your snaps, your smoke bombs, stuff like that. The stands in town, that's what they're allowed to sell. So the Bureau is going to step up inspection, compliance inspections on those stands that we have throughout the city that are permitted. We do do follow-up. Unfortunately, we've had caught vendors that sell in Iowa, they have the stuff in their trailer. We ask them to remove it, take it out of there, or else they won't get a permit the following year. Unfortunately, beyond that, everything goes to a one-point-four GE firework, which is considered consumer, and that's the things that go pop or have a report. That's your bottle rockets, Roman candles, stuff like that. Those are not legal, but unfortunately, vendors can sell them in Illinois. So it's kind of a, I think there's over a hundred and, hundred and forty-some stands throughout the state, and mainly they follow the interstate corridors. But, of course, our neighbors across the river can sell pretty much anything over there as well. So that's a little bit more convenient.
Did you ever hear any on this venture?
Yeah. Is there an increase in accidents compared to previous years?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that. I don't know if you, if you have any stats of previous years, but I'm, I mean, it's, usually just one or two a year. I don't think I've seen any significant increase.
Mr. Timian, then, Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I see you, Mr. Schmidt, as well.
I, I'm under the impression that fines only work as a deterrent if people think it's realistic that they're going to get caught, and no one does. No one thinks that they're going to get caught. And so I don't think that they're, this is an appropriate deterrent. I fear that if we increase it, it will be weaponized against certain communities, and that's also not really something I'm on board with. I think a nominal fine is a deterrent, or is, is a punishment as much as, a fifty dollars is still fifty dollars, and that's, that's annoying if you get sided with it. I, I think that that could teach a lesson without ruining a family's year.
Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are other neighboring cities looking at increasing fines, or how are they approaching?
The question, I'm not aware of any. We haven't really had that discussions amongst chiefs, but I can tell you that everybody deals with the same problem.
And my, the reason I ask is, you know, if we go up to seven hundred and fifty bucks, well, I'm going to go to my friend's house in East Moline, Rock Island. But it's still.
We recommend it.
Yeah, it, it's still, it's in our community, and you can still hear the fireworks.
Yeah, I understand. And that's the other problem is, you know, to your point on Murphy. And that's the other problem is, you know, to your point, old Murphy, people hear these loud ones, but the, the loud ones go up higher and they're so hard to find, you know, like it's just, it's like chasing a laser light show, you know, where's it coming from?
Mr. Schmidt?
You know, that difficulty that Alderperson Mercedes brought up about the fines, I literally witnessed the neighbors pick up and move to someone else's house so that if the cops got sent back out, they wouldn't be hit for being at the same location to get their fine. I mean, they're, they're going to bounce it around in a million different ways, I think, no matter what we do. I, I think my inclination would be to focus on if there are opportunities we have to curb the behavior, like super late nights, right? Or, or just something that is going to make that difference. I don't think we can run into making a big fine push that's going to help in that way, but I do wonder if following up on certain things might help. The other, the other question I had is if, if someone is, essentially gets the police and they're called out and they come, I mean, would we issue a citation if we have to return a second time? How, would, would that be playing out there or has that not been a major issue generally the last few years?
That's a good question. I didn't, I guess I did not bring repetitive complaint calls. My general guess is, is just from my own experience, is typically because they go off, typically we're not being called back out to the same location, at least in the same night, right? Now, they may have another supply that goes on for days or what, what you'll have happen is House A has them tonight, House B has them tomorrow, and it's all kind of, you know, and you're all living neighborhoods, you know how people are friends. And there's some people that have traditions and their traditions have grown in class of fireworks as well as, you know, larger parties over more days. I know that the Fire Marshal also did say that the cost of fireworks has also gone up seventy-five percent. So maybe that, that will be a deterrent in itself, but yeah, I mean, there's just no great answer. There's all good questions. I don't have your repetitive question. I think it's an option, but from my experience, it's typically not the, not the call that we're, that's not the problem.
I would like to add, oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. McNeil. You go ahead first.
So I'm not in the camp that hates fireworks, but I might be in the camp that strongly dislikes how many.
Yeah.
And so just thinking about this year, and I don't know, there's no way to quantify, but it seems like they increase every year. So this is something that we could be looking at that only gets large.
You mean, actually, no, the, the complaints have returned. So they got really bad in twenty twenty-one and we're back.
They have dropped.
We're back down to the same level of complaints for the week that we, we had pre-pandemic.
Okay.
So I think what you are finding is that people have different types of fireworks that are louder, that are rattling the window or something like that. They spend a little bit more money. It's markup money or whatever they were calling it. They got, they're like, oh, let's throw it into the fireworks and, and blow off a larger shell. The other, I mean, we also have to be honest that our neighboring states are not, Iowa legalized fireworks two, three years ago, maybe four years ago. You readily look it up. I mean, you can get major stuff over there. So that's a large part, that's, I think, why you feel that way is because the, the content of the display, home display has changed.
So I'm also interested, you mentioned social media. What has our messaging been around in the past or what would it look like this year? Are we, is it around the fines or is it around safety? Is it risk?
That's a good question. We kind of do a mixed bag. We've gotten good response showing the injuries that are caused from fireworks. So we're a paramedic service. We do see some of this stuff unfortunately. So we do have some X-ray photos and those type of things that get a reaction to maybe, maybe make people think twice. But like Chief Gault just mentioned, as far as fireworks and, you know, fireworks that are loud or they're getting louder, the fireworks that we have for lighting of the commons, for example, those are considered a consumer grade firework, believe it or not.
Yeah.
So that's what we're up against and fortunately it is the stuff that's like one point three G, which is heavily regulated by the ATF and IDNR and stuff. That stuff is out there too and that becomes an officer safety issue. And if we discover those type of things, I mean, that'd literally bring in the bomb squad. There's been firefighters that have gone to calls in someone's garage. They're going to take the fireworks. They put it in the fire truck and they take it back to the firehouse and it can be, it can be catastrophic. So our members are trained not to touch the stuff and I will send some educational stuff out to Chief Gault as well. So his officers are trained to identify. It's very distinctive wrappers. They don't have the bright fancy wrappers like the one point three G stuff does. And that stuff is heavily regulated, but occasionally, you know, someone's working a show with someone else, they put one in their pocket or whatever happens, happens. One didn't go off, they take it home and that stuff is out there in the communities.
Thank you for all of that information. I think you're hearing, do you have a consensus from this group that-
Status quo.
Status quo, but I think I would like to emphasize this point about the social media presence or any kind of media outreach that you plan. One thing we haven't discussed is simply encouraging more neighborliness, which we need in so many parts of our community in the first place. Do you have vets? Are there people who are actually impacted by PTSD, et cetera, who are willing to speak about why, you know, any kind of consideration during the holiday? Like, I don't know how you put that together with professionals or anybody that we have doing community outreach and engagement, but I, I feel like that might be a path we haven't explored yet. The people with pets, these are people who write regularly on Facebook every year about why they're so disappointed in their neighbors. And if there's some smart plan we can come up with related to increasing that consideration, that'd be great. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. I actually wanted to kind of speak on that same issue. I think that we had seen a good response to a lot of how it was approached last year in those conversations about being neighborly and keeping in mind the pets and children and those. I mean, I, I myself often have, one of my children has to go out to his grandparents in the middle of nowhere because they, they impact him. So I mean, it's, it's something that kind of hits that home, but I do think that, just that sort of message about like, hey, like, keep it reasonable, you know? I, I understand it's hard for us to also step up because it's illegal. We're supposed to say, don't do it at all. But I also think we know that that's not going to work as well. So I think when we can walk that line, I think it's going to work better. And I, when I've seen it happening around the community and neighborhoods, people who use the fireworks, they seem to be far more receptive to that message than the, you know, don't do it, forget you, hey, maybe get it over with by ten or ten-thirty, that, that message lands a little better, I think.
Thank you.
And one other thing is, I know we put it out on our social media, but we might boost those posts if we have it been as well, making sure that it's getting to people, not just people who regularly follow the city information, but to people all over the community.
Mr. Timian?
I would argue that Facebook might not be the best social media outlet for reaching a target audience like this.
Gee, who has a TikTok?
Our podcast.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have to think creatively with administration on how, which way you're going.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll call our regular council meeting to order, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is required of the United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible.
Do you have an invocation, Mr. Timian?
I do not.
Okay. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Mercedes?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of May seven, twenty twenty-four. Appointments made at Committee of the Whole on May seven, twenty twenty-four and May twenty-one, twenty twenty-four and consent agenda items fifteen point one through fifteen point three inclusively.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Mercedes. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercedes?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number seventeen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities, Inc. for project number fourteen seventy-one, Moline Public Library Garden, for the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Thankful you could be able to get it going, the PLA and everything.
We're very excited for this project. We've been at this for what, three years now at least, four years? So it's, it's been a long time coming. Good things come to those who wait.
Thank you so much. There's nothing further. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercedes?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number seventeen point two, a resolution approving the purchase of one parcel of excess I-74 bridge property from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the total fair market value of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars and directing city administration to pursue the purchase of said parcels with IDOT through its completion and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, corporation council and city staff to do all things necessary to acquire said real property.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Mercedes. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercedes?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number eighteen point one, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article Three, Retail Licenses, Division Three, Privileges Confirmed by Various Classes of Licenses by Enacting a New Section Four dash three three one eight entitled Option Five, Packaged Sales for Off-Premise Consumption for Class A Licenses and Consecutively Renumbering the Remaining Sections of Division Three and Amending Article Three, Retail Licenses, Division Two, Licensing Procedure, Section Four dash three two zero eight, License Fees by Adding Fee Information for the New Option Five.
Motion to advance, the second waiting.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercedes?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Motion to advance to second reading carries and that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Great, thank you so much. Ms. Laney's business, not too much, other than please keep your eye open for all of these groundbreakings or ribbon cuttings, especially on major projects like Riverside River Slide. Just a very exciting time in the city of Moline, lots of things coming to fruition. Also, our representative, Mr. McNeil, for ByState is not able to go tomorrow. So if any one of you would like to join me at the ByState Commission, I think it's your mayor pro tem, but you're probably at work, but just talk to me afterwards. It's a three-thirty meeting. Where are we at now? The Rock Island County building. So, but it's not the end of the world if no one can go and represent. Okay? And that's all I have this evening. Ms. Murphy?
Yeah.
Mr. Mercedes?
Yes, Your Honor. I had my second ward meeting and it was attended by a big group of our staff. So, but you know, in spite of there not being a lackluster attendance from our ward residents, that's not a bad thing because nobody was complaining. So, but, but we made, you know, we made the most of it. I guess I take it for granted how people are in different buildings. They don't see each other. So everybody took it upon themselves to just kind of update each other on what they were doing and what's going on in their area. So in spite of it not being as, as popular as your ward meeting or even Alderwoman Castro, still, we had a good discussion there amongst the staff. So, but thank you again to all the staff that went and, and we've made the most of it.
Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Razak, anything?
Thanks, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I alluded to this. I'm a heavy consumer podcast and I encourage you all to check out the new Moline Police Department's podcast. If you didn't know, it exists and we have a host in the corner over here. So I, I commend them for any attempt, a non-conventional attempt for outreach, both for recruitment and for community-oriented policing, which breaks, breaks out a lot of those barriers between residents and those who have sworn an oath to protect and serve. So just want to commend them and thank them and ask you all to subscribe. Thank you.
Just like to acknowledge the residents in the east end of Moline, the past two weekends, had a cleanup and then the tree planting that was planned by the Moline Development Corporation. So very neighborly group down there, very engaged, excited about progress at East End Park. And a big shout out to Parks Maintenance Staff for two back-to-back Saturdays with residents in the east end.
Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yeah, just briefly, just following up on Alder McNeil's comment. Yeah, MCDC's program was quite successful. A hundred trees got planted in literally two days. It's the fastest, according to Eric, the fastest that we've planted that many trees ever. There's still at least thirty more to go that are available that I'm aware of. Great cooperation from staff. I want to do a shout out to the whole staff for, we had about twenty-five percent of our full-time workforce out actually during the cleanup days, working all across the city, which was really, really great, which that's probably about one half of, let's say about fifty percent of our, of our non-public safety personnel were out actually working. Eric has received compliments about the park at the east end. There's a woman who lives there, past fifty-three years and says it's the best it's ever looked. So, you know, I wish Pat was here for that because he would have really enjoyed that. Speaking of Pat, I am going to be going to the park board meeting on Thursday afternoon over at Public Works and on the agenda is a recommendation to rename East End Park O'Brien Park. So I'm sure that will be well received and, and I'll bring that back, that news back for final and formal approval by the city council. So, and there's all kinds of things going on, but we'll just stop there for now.
Thank you. Any other staff updates? All right. Hearing none. We'll move to a public comment. Chief? And so we need executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisitions dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C five, pending probable or imminent litigation dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mercedes?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, we move to closed session. Thank you, everyone.